by Terry Latassa and here I am, and Daniel Fletcher and myself, Sandy Freeman, and we are joined on Zoom with Hanson Reed and Mike Dawson and Mike Brassfield remotely. We have staff members, Jennifer Clary and Kim Cole. And Jennifer, would you like to take role?
Yes, I will.
Here.
Sorry about that.
Chair Freeman.
Cannot hear her.
And Vice Chair Reed.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Millich seems to be absent. And Commissioner Reed. Oh, sorry, I already got you. All right, so that's you here. Six of you here, and then you already announced staff, I believe. That is myself, who recording Secretary Query and Community Development Director, Kim Cole. And Chair, would you like me to take this opportunity to announce how viewers can join to provide public comment?
I would.
Great. We do encourage members of the public to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and Comcast 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you would like to provide a public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers listed on the agenda posted at isarchemontreal.org. Since the meeting has begun, you will find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Once again, 833-568-64.
That everyone's connected.
Then you will need to enter your webinar ID, which for this meeting is 161-990-8039. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is 161-990-8039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeeting. To provide public comment, use the raise your hand button in Zoom at the bottom of the screen. If you are providing public comment by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, then *6 to unmute when called upon. Public commenters calling in by phone will be announced using the last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected by phone as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in the order of their hands raised, and there will be a three-minute time limit for today's meeting for public comments. And thank you. Currently, I see nobody with their hands raised. So I would say it's back to Chair.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. We have three items on today's agenda. The minutes on the consent agenda and on the regular agenda recommending an ordinance to the city council for ADUs and considering 2101 North Fremont Street, the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and use permit. So we'll begin with the consent agenda and the minutes. Does any member of the committee have a comment about the minutes?
I do not, but I move to approve as amended.
I have one comment, and that's on page three of the packet page seven. This is item page three, packet page seven, three lines from the very bottom. Chair Brassfield asked if sound litigation is viable at the site. I believe he meant, or I mean the word meant mitigation.
Move to approve as amended.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the amended minutes. Any comment? All right. All those in favor? Oh, you know what, Jennifer, why don't you read the names? Because since not all of us are here.
Yes, that is still recommended in our hybrid format. So thank you. Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
And Commissioner Millich is still absent. Those minutes passed as amended by a vote of six.
Good. The next item on the agenda is public comments not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment not on the agenda? All right. Is there anyone on the Zoom conference who would like to make a comment not on the agenda?
Once again, for our viewers at home, the number to join is 833-568-8864. That is a toll-free number. You will need a webinar ID. That is 161-990-8039. And detailed instructions to join are posted on the agenda at isarchemontreal.org. I do see no hands raised at this time. So just a reminder, the raise your hand, there is a button in Zoom at the bottom of the screen, or if you're providing public comment by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, then *6 to unmute when called upon. And I do see no hands raised, so I would say it's safe to move on.
All right, let's move on then to the regular agenda. The first public appearance item is number three on the agenda. Consider recommending an ordinance to the city council amending Chapter 38 of the City of Monterey Code related to accessory dwelling units. I think we'll begin with a staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Just starting off with some introductions this afternoon first. My name is Kimberly Cole. I'm the Community Development Director for the city of Monterey. The city has also worked very closely with our legal counsel. And Erin, if you could please introduce yourself, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, my name is Erin LaFerolari. I'm an attorney at Goldfarb and Littman, and I've been working with the Monterey team on drafting this ordinance.
Great. Thank you very much, Erin. So if you have legal questions as we discuss this particular ordinance, please feel free to ask Erin any questions as she's acting as an extension of city staff on this item. So this afternoon, we're asking you to consider recommending an ordinance to the city council, basically amending our municipal code regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Just in terms of background, I think our planning commission is very well aware, we at least had a couple of study sessions on this issue, that the California State Legislature brought forward several bills relating to the planning and permitting of accessory dwelling units to address the housing supply crisis in the California. Those new laws took effect on January 1, 2020, and even though we, our local ordinances were basically repealed, we've been implementing state law. But there's some opportunities as we actually work towards codifying our ordinance and options for the planning commission to consider. So I'm first going to just describe some of the basics about accessory dwelling units and state law and junior accessory dwelling units and state law. These aren't anything you can modify or potentially change, but they're the basics. So an accessory dwelling unit by definition can either be an attached or detached residential dwelling unit. They typically include complete independent living facilities with a bathroom and a kitchen, and they're located on the same parcel as a proposed or existing single-family dwelling or multifamily dwelling. So I think that's an important distinction. As I work with the public, not a lot of people understand that they also are permitted within multifamily dwelling units. And so what are the basics of ADUs? We have to allow them with a setback of four feet from the side and rear property lines. They are exempt from owner occupancy requirements, and there's a caveat there until 2025. The city cannot require replacement of lost parking spaces when a garage, carport, or any sort of covered parking structure is converted to an ADU. The maximum height for new construction within single-family and multifamily building is 16 feet, but cities can adopt less restrictive standards with this particular issue if they want. And I think this is going to be one of our key discussion points this afternoon. As I mentioned, multifamily ADUs, they are allowed in the developed portions of an existing multifamily building, and that's typically converting an existing parking space to some sort of living unit. The number of ADUs for a multifamily parcel is equivalent to 25% of the units, or one. And then in addition to that, two detached accessory dwelling units are allowed on the property. So I think that's fairly surprising to people because I think as we think about accessory dwelling units, most of us are used to thinking of a single-family house with a unit in the back, but the state law also applies to multifamily properties. So a junior accessory dwelling unit by definition is no more than 500 square feet in size. It can include an efficiency kitchen consistent with building code standards. The unit is contained entirely within an existing or proposed single-family dwelling. It can include garages, so they can convert a JDU or convert a garage into a JDU. So what we see on some parcels is we not only get an accessory dwelling unit, but we also get a JDU on the property. And what's interesting about junior accessory dwelling units, it can either include separate sanitation facilities, or they can share it with the existing residents. So there is, we've had a few applications where they're sharing of sanitation facilities. Owner occupancy is required for a JDU unless the owner is, there's an exception, a governmental agency, a land trust, or a housing organization. And this is an important point, the second point. Cities can require replacement parking for a JDU that replaces an existing garage if this requirement is adopted by the local agency. So right now, we have not adopted that. So we're, well, the proposed ordinance includes a parking requirement for JDUs. And then obviously ministerial approval is required for all of these. So those are some of the basics. If you have more detailed questions, and all the nuances of those at the public counter get pretty specific as we're asking, discussing the state law and people's proposals, but what are really the policy questions in front of you? And I think the first one you really need to consider is should the city allow ADUs to be taller than 16 feet? And we took a stab at this, and actually in the R3 district, which is our multifamily apartment district, we're recommending a 20-foot height limit. And you may ask, you know, why would you consider that? What we're finding is that some applicants are very interested in retaining their onsite parking and building the accessory dwelling unit above. So with a 16-foot height limit, that's really challenging, typically basically impossible. A garage, if you think of the floor-to-ceiling height for a garage and the needed floor-to-ceiling height for a unit above, you really can't do that within 16 feet. 16 feet basically limits it to a single-story building. And so the real, the policy question in front of you, and I think we may get public comments, you know, I've heard them all across the board on this issue. Some people want to see how the 16 feet works for a while, and other people are very interested in providing more flexibility to increase our housing supply. I think what's really important to understand is that we cannot require design review or evaluate people's view impacts with these. If we decide to loosen up the height requirement, anything we adopt has to be an objective design standard, basically a checklist at the building department. So the question in front of the planning commission, the proposal at least, is the 20-foot height limit in the R3 district, 16 feet everywhere else. But where do we want to go with that as a community? You know, one of the questions is, do we want to remove parking requirements altogether, especially for JDUs? State law allows a city to require parking for JDUs It's proposing an eight-hundred-and-fifty-square-feet minimum and a thousand-square-foot maximum based on number of bedrooms, and I'll get into that in just, in a second, but the city could be more flexible. So just in terms of consideration, local governments can establish minimum and maximum unit size for both attached and detached ADUs. The proposed ordinance follows state law, and that an ADU with one bedroom or less is, it's at least eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet. You have to allow that. ADUs with more than one bedroom, we're looking up to a thousand square feet. If you don't have an ordinance, or you may want to allow additional flexibility, we could allow ADUs up to a thousand-two-hundred square feet. And I saw one public comment recommending ADUs up to twenty, I think twenty-five-hundred square feet. So that might be interesting to discuss and obtain some legal input if you can actually go up to two-hundred-and-fifty or two-thousand-five-hundred square feet if you wanted to. So prohibition for short-term rentals. The proposed ordinance prohibits future ADUs and JADUs to be used for short-term rentals consistent with adopted policy. Ultimately, this ordinance, as we work on our local coastal plan, will also have to go in front of the California Coastal Commission, and there may be a further discussion on goals and priorities for the state of California. We feel confident that we can, in our draft ordinance, prohibit short-term rentals. That's our proposal. So in summary, we have five policy questions in front of the commission, and we're asking you to accept public comments, discuss them, and if you feel comfortable this afternoon, recommending the ordinance to the city council. You have any more questions? I'm happy to answer those.
I have a question. On the multifamily zones where they can convert parking to ADUs, is there any limitation on the number of stalls? I mean, could someone conceivably take their entire parking lot and create a use and not be responsible for replacing the parking?
I think it would be based on the limitation of the size of the ADUs. So we are, we're proposing eight-fifty and a thousand based on the number of bedrooms. But Erin, do you have any more experience with that?
So, going back to the code, one second. Yes, so there's no restriction on the amount of parking that the ADUs could take up in a multifamily parking lot. And there's actually fewer restrictions that you can apply. You can apply the sixteen-foot height limitation and the four-foot side and rear setbacks for multifamily detached accessory dwelling units. You can't actually apply a square foot limitation. But you can apply regular parking standards, so one parking per ADU.
Number of units.
Okay.
There's a, there's a limit on a number of units, is there not?
Yes. Because two accessory, two detached accessory dwelling units on a multifamily site.
And you can also, though, Erin, convert, for example, part of the, let's say it's an apartment building with residential above and parking below, you can convert up to, or that parking into one ADU. I think the policy question is, can you, is there a limitation on the size of that ADU? Could it only take up eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet? Or what happens if they wanted to take up the entire parking garage?
Yeah, for the multifamily, there's not a limitation on the size, just on the count.
Thank you.
Quick question. If a normal garage is four-hundred square feet, and the typical person wants to leave the garage as a garage and build above it and put a four-hundred-square-foot ADU above the existing garage, that's only four-hundred square feet and it's not eight-hundred-and-fifty?
But you're saying that's actually the proposal. I think they can propose an ADU, and Erin, correct me, I would say that they could propose an ADU that's smaller than the minimum, but, I mean, if that's what they want, but we can't require it to be smaller than, than the minimums in state law.
Yes, so the eight-fifty is the, what we're proposing as the maximum size for an ADU with zero to one bedroom. So they could propose a four-hundred-square-foot ADU. But that would go back to our question about the height limitations also.
Very.
Yeah, I do have a few. So my first question sort of deals with the, just the definitions of ADU versus JADU. So it looks like the, the minimum sizes for both of them aren't defined, except in one place where it refers to a state health and safety code that isn't defined. So I guess that health and safety code, I didn't look it up, but, you know, it talks about a minimum bedroom size and spaced in front of toilets and all that kind of stuff. Is that what's going on there?
Yes, the health and safety code reference is to efficiency unit sizes. I would have to double-check the size. I have a thought of how big that is, but I would want to double-check before.
Okay, you could while we're talking. I mean, you don't have to answer it right now. Maybe there is a numerical size that they actually state.
Yes, I'll look that up right now.
Let's see, so the way I understand it, then, there are certain circumstances here where an applicant may want to apply for a JADU because it's advantageous in some way. I can't remember exactly what. So what you were just saying is if you want to apply for an ADU that's four-hundred square feet, it's, that's okay. You can, I mean, I did one in PG last year that was a hundred-and-seventeen square feet. So it met all the requirements. So I guess that there aren't really minimum sizes, and, and you could just decide whether your unit is going to be an ADU or a JADU.
So we do have applicants to, so we have, it's all across the board. We have people proposing an ADU and a JADU on a site. We have some people just proposing ADUs and others are proposing just in JADU. I think what I've, what I've noticed is depending on, we're unique because of our water restrictions, and if people don't have enough to carve out perhaps a new bathroom for the JADU, that they'll share sanitation facilities with the main house. So I see a lot of decisions being made along those lines predominantly is like, you know, how many water credits do we have? And most people try to get the biggest accessory dwelling unit that they can.
Right.
And so, but it's just, how does that relate to the water?
Right. So that's the way I, my next question was about that very thing. So let's say an applicant doesn't have enough water credits to do a full-on bathroom and kitchen. Then they can share, even though they might be above the garage, by the rules, they could build an ADU without a bathroom.
No, so that's not true for an ADU. That's only true potentially for a JADU.
Okay, right.
So that's the distinction. You have to have, the ADU stands as an independent living facility.
I see, so JADU can go without a bathroom. So, you know, given Sandy's example of this JADU then over the garage, they don't have enough water credits. If they call it a JADU and it's four-hundred square feet or whatever, they can do it with just a kitchen sink. And that's, but they do have to have a kitchen sink.
Yes.
Okay.
But I was thinking of a detached garage with a ADU above it, not a JADU, but you could have a attached garage with a JADU above it, and then you wouldn't have to have a bathroom. Because the garage would be a hat, attached to the house.
Right.
So it has to be, as far as I understand, what, the, the couple scenarios I've seen this is where people take their existing garage, carve out five-hundred square feet, and there may be between the house and the garage like a laundry room slash bathroom, and then people will share that bathroom facility for both of the, the main house and the, the JADU. That's what we're seeing most often. We're not seeing right now, obviously because of the height limits, an accessory dwelling unit above a garage. We have lots of people, or lots, we have, we've had like five or a handful really wanting that as an option.
But this, this draft ordinance addresses that with the twenty-foot thing, the twenty-foot limit.
We believe it does. And I think you'll hear public testimony today that twenty feet's not high enough. And as architects, you know, the question, question is, you know, without a view impact analysis and sort of the normal things we go through in architectural review, if that doesn't exist, what are we comfortable with as a city?
Right.
So let's say we allow twenty-five feet, which may make a lot of sense for, as you know, our lots that are, have a slight slope to them, our height measure, measurement is to existing or finished grade, whichever is more restrictive. So if you have slope to your property, you're going to have a tough time in some scenarios building a ADU above a garage, but then balance that with the potential risk to adjoining property owners. And I think, you know, the answers could be, you know, allow twenty-five-foot ADUs with, you know, with a garage, or we want to stay with sixteen feet because we want to see how that works out, or we sort of split it and said, let's, let's see how twenty works for a while.
Right. I mean, I just did a little sketch here. If you figure eight-foot ceiling heights, garage and ADU, one foot of structure in between them and one foot of roof, that's, that's a, or wait a minute, sixteen, that's a, right there. So that means you can only have a two-foot of grade difference to meet that twenty-foot rule.
Correct.
So the, that's probably a little fast, but the, yeah, it seems like, I'm sorry. Adding a couple of feet to that twenty-foot would allow people with at least a reasonable slope situation to still get that. It was sort of an old-fashioned thing in the last century, you know, they used to call them carriage houses. You'd have a little apartment over the garage, they're all over the place, and in a lot of situations, it's, it's a good thing. Okay, my next question is, some of these are just examples, and I want to make sure I'm understanding it. So let's say you have an existing garage, it's one foot from the property lines, and you just convert it to an ADU. That, most jurisdictions allow that, so what do we say here in this ordinance?
We're required to allow it. The conversion of an existing structure to an ADU. I think the thing that's been a little bit challenging in our building official is here is I don't know whether that changes the fire resistive, like whether there needs to be additional fire resistive construction when you change the use or not. I know energy calcs have been challenging for ADUs. So, you know, Lori, I don't know if you have any comments of the, if we had a garage structure one foot from a property line with the fire resistive, how would that change? Does that change looking at it from a building code? Yeah, you have to come up here if you can't hear it.
Hi, my name's Lori Williamson. I'm the building official for the city of Monterey.
Oh, you have to turn.
Turn on the mic.
It's that button, there.
My name's Lori Williamson. I'm the chief building official for the city of Monterey. With regards to proximity of property lines, any residential construction less than five feet requires firewall assembly. So if you took a garage that was one foot from the property line, well, first of all, you wouldn't be allowed to have any openings on that wall. Anything less than three feet, no openings at all are permitted, no doors, no windows, not even a fixed window. But depending on how creative you are, you could possibly still design something that would meet codes. And then the walls within five feet of the property line would have to be fire-rated. It's also doable, but it's additional.
So what if it's an existing garage that's in pretty good shape with existing finishes, you know, stucco on the outside and sheet rock inside and, you know, an existing roof of some sort? In order to convert it from a garage to an ADU, they would have to increase the fire rating on that wall and roof?
Yes, if it's not constructed in such a way that it's already a one-hour firewall assembly, then they would have to alter it, maybe add some drywall. Maybe if there's any penetrations, they may have to, you know, treat those.
I see, and the building code requires that because it's a change of use?
The building code requires it as a distance to property line, but, correct, that when you're changing the use from utility that preexists, the garage is a U-type categorization for utility, and residential is an R-three. So when you convert the use from a utility structure to R-three, you would have to bring it up to current code standards.
Okay. City PG doesn't do that, but that's, that's okay. Maybe they don't. Thank you. I have a couple more, sort of be such a pest.
I'm sure you do.
So here's another example. So, and you just said the same thing, so I'm pretty sure I know the answer. So if you have a ten-unit apartment building with parking below, you can go in and convert two of those parking spaces to ADUs if you want.
So you can convert existing parking to an ADU, and it's twenty-five percent of the units on site, or one, I believe it is? So that's in the existing garage. And so we actually had a project that was proposing this. They, they converted, they had, I don't know, four units on site. They proposed one of the parking spaces become an ADU, and then you, in addition to that, you can do two freestanding ADUs. So on a multifamily property, you can theoretically get three ADUs, two freestanding, and one within. We also see people like converting larger laundry rooms and things like that into ADUs, storage areas.
Right. Okay. All right, then, another one is, I'm running into this in other jurisdictions in the coastal zone. The Coastal Commission doesn't quite have its act together yet, and there are these sort of discrepancies, especially regarding converting garages to ADUs. And we don't really have that much, I guess that stuff along Del Monte Beach, those apartment buildings, that's about it.
We also have all of Del Monte Beach, the Del Monte Beach subdivision, all the way to Del Monte Avenue. That's our primary residential area.
Oh, so.
Of both the single-family and multifamily in that area.
All the way up on Dune Crest and that whole area.
Correct.
That's all coastal.
That's all coastal zone. So think about it, along Del Monte Avenue.
Right.
Basically, then it runs up to Pacific, it goes sort of around Lighthouse Curve.
Right.
And then roughly, and I know with a couple of exceptions, runs along the Recreation Trail with an exception for the Coast Guard property as well as our parking garage.
Okay. Does that mean the Coastal Commission has to approve this ordinance?
So ultimately, so you have to remember, the city of Monterey does not have an approved LCP, and we're kickstarting that off again. So every project in our coastal zone, every, everything has to go to the California Coastal Commission for a permit. That's lighting fixtures, that's, any permit you approve in the coastal zone or the Architecture Review Committee approves goes to the California Coastal Commission. Most of them are exemptions.
Right.
But they can require full permits.
Okay. So the, are you aware of then the, that the Coastal Commission has a different standard or when you, about providing replacement parking?
Yeah.
When you convert a garage to an ADU?
So I think that's dependent on your city's local coastal plan and implementation plan. What does it say for ADUs? So what I have noticed, because I monitor coastal commission agendas, is there's a series of cities have been bringing forth their, if you have a certified LCP, they've been bringing forward their ordinance amendments, and the coastal commission, I didn't review it that closely, but I know they've been reviewing ADU ordinances for several cities in the state of California.
Okay. And then finally, the, the letter that we received from Catherine Avila, that was a very detailed letter. Have you had a chance to read that?
Um, I have, and Erin's prepared to respond to some of the legal issues for you. Um, I have, and Erin's prepared to respond to some of the legal issues that were brought up about, inconsistency with state law, we don't believe that it is inconsistent. But she's happy to throw that more. Other things Catherine's letter brings up is, number one, allowing additional height for ADUs, especially, um, looking at twenty-five feet. I see Catherine's on the phone, so I'm sure she'll articulate it herself. There was another comment about water, and we do have in our draft ordinance, a requirement for new water meters, and she's right, we need to change that to sub-meters or something like that. No new meters are allowed to be set in the City of Monterey due to the cease and desist order.
Right.
So, uh, I believe the water district's being requiring a sub-meter that the property owner installs. They can still build their ADU, they're within the water credits on site, they're not installing a new water meter. And so those, those were some of the key provisions, she was looking for a lot more flexibility in height. And then Erin, I don't know if you can respond?
She can't.
She can't?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, too, Catherine Alavilla brought up a couple of questions about the, the requirements.
Yes, so there was one about the, um, replacement parking for J-ADUs, I believe. And so generally speaking, for ADUs, if the construction of the ADU destroys the parking, you can't require replacement parking, um, but that's limited to ADUs. So for J-ADUs, if there's an attached garage and you put the J-ADU in the attached garage, you can require replacement parking, um, linked to the J-ADU, but not the ADU.
Well, what does it look like, Erin? Do you just, uh, do they park in the driveway? Or do they have to create another garage?
Um, I'm not sure how the city would want that to play out. And so Kim might be able to answer that better than I, um, but I think either would be feasible, depending on the site. I don't know if Kim has something to add.
Would it be possible for an applicant to just call a garage conversion, a, um, an ADU to avoid that parking issue problem that comes up with the J-ADU?
Correct, they, and in fact, we've had applicants, you know, I, I think they could, you know, convert the whole garage to an ADU, the, and like I said, this usually hinges on water.
Right.
They may not, I mean, most people, if they have enough water, and they're wanting that independent living unit, they'll, they'll build the full ADU in the garage, and we can't require the replacement parking. Where we see bigger struggles for people is maybe they're doing a freestanding ADU in the back, and they want a J-ADU as well, and they're really struggling with their water credits. Then we'll start to see people, you know, be really creative and try to figure that out. So it usually hinges in my mind to water credits on the site.
Right.
And in terms of parking, you know, so this is my thought. If we can reply, require the replacement parking space for a J-ADU, we would require it to comply with our municipal code, which means it can't be in the front yard setback, and it would need to be a certain dimension. If you're removing a covered parking space, you'd put in a new covered parking space. The question I raised as we were preparing the ordinance is, what happens if they can't conforming parking? Does that mean they can't build the J-ADU? And the answer is yes, we have that discretion. So that's why one of my policy questions to the planning commission was, do we want to eliminate parking requirements in total for, um, J-ADUs? You know, we, we don't have to require that, we're not currently requiring it because our ordinance doesn't, you know, we haven't adopted a local ordinance, but if somebody's building a J-ADU just in the garage, do we want them to replace the parking? This ordinance before you requires that.
Right, so let's say somebody has a, a one-car garage, a two-hundred-square-foot structure detached, and they want to turn it into a, an ADU. It's two-hundred square feet, it has a bathroom and a kitchen, and it's, um, so that, there's, since there's no minimum size for an ADU, that, you can call that an ADU and not have to replace the parking.
Correct.
Okay.
As long as you can sleep standing up.
Well, it's amazing how, how, uh, small little apartments can be. So I guess, one, one last question is, I keep saying it's the last question, is the ministerial, ministerial approval business? The, uh, so what that means is ministerial approval is basically planning approval. You still have to go to the building department.
Yeah, so you're correct, there's no planning permit required for ADUs and J-ADUs that currently comply with state law. And so you bring your plans over to the building department, and the building department and the planning department look for, for conformance with state law requirements. It's basically a checklist, right? We go through, what's this, is, are the setbacks, is it four feet from the side and rear yard setbacks? What's the size of it? And it's a pretty straightforward, you know, review in terms of compliance with, um, state law. I think the one thing I've been hearing that's a little bit more challenging is the energy code for ADUs. So there is a technical issue when people are applying for their building permits, that's been proving challenging for people. But for the most part, it's a checklist, and then compliance with building codes, does it comply?
Right, I just thought of another example, so I'm doing one in PG, that's a historic property on a corner. A garage that they want to convert is behind the house when you're on one street, but on the other street, it's not behind the house. How would you interpret that, um, with this behind business in your draft ordinance?
So on the draft ordinance, so you're saying it would be a designated historic property?
Yes.
And our ordinance says that, and it's attached or deep, it would, if it's attached, it would have to be located behind. So I would say, you know, you're saying something potentially on a corner lot?
Right, right.
Yeah, if it's behind the front yard, so if the, all lots have a front, obviously a front and side yard.
Right.
If it's located physically in the, at the back of the structure, then I would say that that complies.
Okay.
We have, I'm sure, other questions, uh, do you have more?
I know.
Oh, Daniel, all right, uh, Mike, Mike and Hanson probably have questions, let's start with Mike Dawson.
Let's talk about a historic structure. You put a J-ADU and it, it needs its own private entrance. Do you knock a hole in a, in a, in a, in a wall in a, in a historic project, historic building to, to put it in as private entrance?
That's an interesting question, um, my gut reaction is it would have to be allowed, but Erin, do you agree with that?
Um, I would also think it has to be allowed.
I live in a historic house, we have eight entrances to the house, count them eight. But I've seen them where there's only the one, you know, there's the front door and that's, that's IT. And so, uh, in, in, in that case, uh, we have a real problem with a private entrance.
But required.
It is required.
Yeah.
All right, Mike, Grassfield, did you have one?
Oh, I have a couple. Using our chair as an example of a garage that someone wants to put a, an ADU above, and using her four-hundred-square-foot, if it is not, if it's within the normal boundaries of a side yard or backyard, you could counter lever portions of that building to make the upstairs larger, up to the four-foot limit on the sideline, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, in that case, let's reduce it. I used to live in a, with a one-car garage, you could do the same thing, but I'm looking at that hypothetical. And I would have to have, on two different sides, counter lever out to the four-foot limit. I assume that, that you can have more than one example of meeting a four-foot boundary, is that correct?
So I just want to clarify, so I mean, so people aren't required to build to the four-foot rear and side yard setbacks? The state law allows people to build to the four.
And I'd like, yeah, and I'd like to clarify, my examples are, that people want to get some square footage, and that's the way to do it. So that's why I use that example, in, in that particular case, you could, even though it's not on the ground, it's up above, you'd still go within four-foot of the fence line or property line, correct?
Correct, you could do that on both the rear and side yard setbacks.
Thank you. On height, in a lot of these places, I assume that there's already existing roofs. We said twenty-five feet maybe is an example for discussion. If there is an existing roof line, couldn't we put a qualifier in there that would allow up to that existing roof line?
So are you saying if an, so if, if an existing house, let's say, is built at twenty-two feet, you're asking, could the accessory dwelling unit be allowed at twenty-two feet? So versus providing an miracle limit in the ordinance, you could say, or as matches the house?
Correct.
I would think you could do that, because that's an objective standard, that, you know, I would just have to look, and we would verify the height of the existing house, and, and that it matches the, the, the new house. I will say, you know, that's, that all, when we think about that on a flat lot, that's pretty straightforward. With topography on a lot, if, let's say the back of the lot is flat and the, the, the front of the lot where the house is, is steeper, and maybe that house, well, it would have, if it was a new house, it would be twenty-five feet generally. But let's say it's a non-conforming structure and it's at thirty feet at its most extreme. If at the back of the lot, you built an accessory free, you know, accessory dwelling unit above garage, if, if it was written the way you're suggesting, then theoretically that rear unit could be up to thirty feet. I know another way, I think Catherine Avila recommended, was that, that you could match the roof pitch of the main house. So if you have a six-and-twelve roof or whatever you have, you could, um, it would just be, you would allow them, the accessory building to mimic that, that roof line, which has some interesting design implications. I mean, I can see an argument to require the same pitched roof between the accessory dwelling unit and the main house, but remember, you know, we're not completing design review on these. So, you know, and I can see some cases where that can be really beautiful, you know, providing that, that flexibility. You know, I don't, but it's a checklist, you know, the, the requirement has to be a checklist.
Okay.
Okay, uh, and the next one is on the water issue. I assume that with communities running out of water around the state, are other counties and cities starting to look at water availability on any construction? Or are they just allowing them to continue to build?
Well, I think that obviously varies by area, we're in an extreme situation. You know, our water regulations, I think if you are probably some of the most conservative in the state of California due to the cease and desist order, so I don't really know how that compares. You know, what I've been hearing in planning journals is accessory dwelling units is how people are, or how communities are really increasing their housing supply. And, um, for those communities that are, um, have significant objectives to build housing, you know, there, there are significant numbers of new housing units are being built through accessory dwelling units. And there's some, I mean, especially in some areas, there's some really interesting architectural examples, so.
Well, when I look at our water restrictions, and now I see the community's turning on a tap and it's dry, I just hope that legislature is picking up on this, because this is a, a flag waving proudly. That the communities are running out of water, and we just cannot maintain the drive that the state is trying to force on the local communities.
You know, that's a really interesting comment, I just read, uh, a recent article in a, sort of a, a statewide publication, and there was somebody that had been involved in the state of California water supply discussion for years and years. And he didn't bring it so much, um, the issue or the conflict between housing supply and water supply in terms of ADUs. His point was with the regional housing needs assessment, and you're going to find that the City of Monterey is going to have to provide adequate sites for probably way more housing units than we've ever provided in the past. But, you know, that's juxtaposed, you've got one state agency wanting us to build housing, and in another scenario, we haven't been able to, um, provide additional water to lift the cease and desist order so we can build new housing. And you can even suggest maybe we have, you know, that we have two state agencies with, um, very admirable missions and their own rights. But, you know, does the state of California need to come together and do the water, water supply, State Water Resources Control Board needs to speak to housing and community development to understand where in the state we really can build, and what are those restrictions? And so I think that's, I, that discussion is very interesting to me, and I did see it reflected in a recent article.
One of the things that I've noted is that I've lived a history where I watched the state of California put in a lot of canals and so forth, because at the time, we were foreseeing that we were going to be running out of water. Well, those got built, no one has continued that dialogue. And so the state of California, on its infrastructure, we run out of power, we're running out of water. And I don't see Sacramento or any regions really working on a forty-year or fifty-year plan to ensure we have these utilities. And that brings up my last one. One of the things that we're talking about with water is that now the state is writing all these plans to direct that we do things, and no one is paying attention to the historical issues. And I see it in our plans, that we, we pay attention to historical aspects. One of the historical aspects, and even in my neighborhood, and I'm sorry, it's only seventy-five years old. But that's historical in the context, it's part of Monterey, but parking is an issue. In Kona, during special events, we have controlled parking. And there's now voices to be heard that they want to have a permit process because we're getting more and more cars. Well, we're also talking now about reducing all the parking, and I've seen it along North Fremont when we did the construction, we reddened out a whole bunch of parking places that we used to have. So historically, I don't think we're looking at parking as a resource that is being reduced systematically. And I just want us to pay attention to some of the historical aspects of, in my neighborhood, I don't have parking on one side of my house anymore. And that was for the neighborhood. And now we're talking about reducing further parking capabilities, so. I just think that we need to start looking at that a little bit deeper, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Hanson, I'm sure you have some questions?
I, I know, I do not have any questions, but I would like to make sure that we stay on task and ask questions versus do comment, and then make a comment after.
Thank you, I was gonna say the same thing, but thank you for saying that, you know, Dan, I kind of cut you off, do you have some more questions?
No, I had my question answered.
Okay, I have one question, and then I just wanted to make sure that I summarize the main topics of questions. Let's say you've got a two-story over a garage, an ADU, separate from the house. Do you put the stairway outside or inside? Is there a building department requirement that the stairway has to go inside?
So you have to have an exterior entrance to the ADU, so you have, but whether or not it has its own independent door and that goes up, or whether it's on the outside or inside of the building, there's not a requirement.
Okay. So just listening to the questions, it, it seems as though, one of the main questions is the difference in requirements for replacing a parking space for JD, J-ADUs and ADUs. ADU, you don't have to replace a parking space, and J-ADU, you do, is a driveway, a suitable replacement for a J-ADU so that it can match the requirement for the ADU, that's one main question I've heard. Another question I've heard is, will there be a sub-meter to? Another question I've heard is, will there be a sub-meter to the main water meter? Can this be done? The third one is even if the setback is less than four feet, can we put in the ordinance that the ADU can build up to the existing roof line as matches the house? And then the fourth main question I've heard is, do we want to set a higher height limit in order to allow a full two-story ADU instead of 16 feet or even 18 feet? And as Terry pointed out, if you want a roof and two floors, it's going to be 20 feet. So do we want to adjust the ordinance to increase the height? And I know, there may have been other issues, but those are the four that I heard the most.
So I really like the question you're bringing up about parking, you know, if we're going to require it, if a JADU takes a parking place. I think we could specify in our ordinance and provide more flexibility than we do currently. We could allow it to be on the existing driveway, which may be in the front yard setback. You sort of know people park anyways on their driveway, so maybe that's not that big of a give, but how I, how.
The R1 park requirement.
Yeah, behind the garage, you can have your second. So that, I think that could be specified in this ordinance if you want to provide that flexibility. That it has to be maybe on the driveway, it has to be a certain dimension. And.
Well, then it would not be favor, favoring one type over another type, requiring it for one, but not for the other.
Regarding sub-meters, the water district is currently requiring sub-meters.
Okay.
And I think that's something that needs to change in this ordinance because we can't set new meters, period.
Right.
I guess I do have one other one. So let's say we, we have a, or an ADU over a garage and it's, it's very close to a side setback. Was there any consideration to setback issues regarding that kind of ADU over garage?
You could create a standard that if we're going to allow this increased height, that second story, that, that building height over 16 feet needs to be 10 feet from the rear property line, you could establish a bigger setback as long as it's a standard that we could apply. Because remember, it has to be allowed at 16 feet within four and four of the rear and side property lines, but if we are going to provide more flexibility in height, you could increase the setbacks.
I see. So.
I think, and Erin, tell me if I'm wrong, but at least that's how I would think about it. Correct.
It could be one of those kind of ordinances that has a 16-foot maximum within the four-foot setbacks. But then once you get beyond those four feet, it could be higher.
When you. It could be the four feet. More in.
You could be higher if it was more than four feet.
Right. Or you could have a stepped, you know, structure where the second floor wall doesn't line up with the ground floor wall.
I think maybe it's time to move on to public comment. I'm sure that Jennifer's been collecting.
Making sure everything is on. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects to live with no lag time. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers listed on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, then enter the webinar ID. For this meeting, it is 161-990-8039. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is 161-990-8039. To provide public comment, use the raise your hand button in Zoom at the bottom of the screen. If you are providing public comment by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters calling in by phone will be announced using the last three phone number digits of the name typed into, or the name typed into Zoom. And once again, just a reminder, we do have a three-minute time limit. And I do see someone ready.
You know, Jennifer, before, why don't those people wait for a minute? Because I think we have a gentleman in the audience who would like to make a comment. Why don't you go on up?
Definitely. And please state your name for the record if you feel comfortable doing so.
Sure. This working? My name's Rich Ayello. I'm a property owner here in Monterey who's recently applied for an ADU over a garage. So I'd like to begin first of all by thanking staff. Thank you so much for working on the details of this ordinance, very important. And for the commissioners to take the time to review and consider the changes. So a couple of things that I want to comment on. Number one, I think that parking is most critical when dealing with the proposed changes. If you lived here in Old Monterey, like I have here, right above a couple of blocks from where we sit today here, having this meeting, you'll know how, how impacted parking is. So parking is definitely an issue that we need to consider. When dealing with height, I think the proposed ordinance to allow more height is, is, is good, however, not good enough. I think we need more height and we need to be more flexible. When we look at and consider the topography of pretty much all the properties in Monterey, we're on a hill. From Alvarado to the DLI, from Canary Row up the hill in New Monterey, all the way up to Forest, we're all on a hill. You're going to find slopes that are in excess of two feet. In my example, in my case, right here, just on Larkin Street, two blocks up, I have a garage that I'm looking to build an ADU on top, whereas I have a six-foot slope. There's no way that I could retain parking at an ADU and keep it within 20 feet. That would be virtually impossible. So I think the height ordinance of 20 feet would work only if you have a flat lot. On average, I would think that you're looking at about a foot for the, the foundation, the, the slab, an eight-foot ceiling for a garage, and especially if you're going to incorporate an electric garage door opener. And then the ADU on top of that, another eight feet, what about the roof and the pitch? So any properties with the slope would require more height. I'm recommending, I would hope that the staff and the commissioners would consider a 25-foot proposal to take care of that issue in parking. Parking is of the utmost nature here. Living here on Larkin Street in the past, when you've tried to park after work, after 5:00 PM, you will not be able to find a park for the entire street. When we talk about height, we also want to consider our neighbors, of course, and if you look at these, most of these are three zones, you will find that there's apartments all at 25-foot height limits throughout these old Monterey City blocks. I appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for providing your public comments. Do we have anyone else in person who would like to provide comments? Does not appear so. The first hand I saw raised in Zoom is named S9. Please unmute yourself and state your name if you.
Hello, my name is Susan Nine. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. I am president of the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association, which is an R1 neighborhood almost exclusively. And I'm calling today to express the position of MVNA on the ADU, JDU proposed ordinance. We are particularly concerned about the height issue. We would, our position is to not go above 16 feet in any R1, single-family residence. We are a hillside, largely hillside neighborhood. And with only four-foot setbacks, there's a great potential for harm to neighboring properties if, if ADUs were allowed on a second story. We already have issues with blocked sunlight, views, air circulation, noise. And if there were, especially without live-in owners, that the impacts could be really hard on especially those downhill. Many houses already loom over the lower hill neighbors and the lower hill neighbors have the potential of blocking views of the upper hill neighbors. So we recognize the need to comply with the requirements outlined in the state laws. But we urge you not to go beyond those limits, especially in R1 neighborhoods. And I think that they should only be granted on a case-by-case basis in other zoning neighborhoods, but I'm speaking on behalf of MVNA today. So we are also in favor of maintaining the limits on size to 850 square feet or 800 square feet and 1,000 square feet for one bedroom. We are a very densified neighborhood. We don't have vacant lots and the lot lines are often very close together. And we don't want to see our lots completely covered with buildings and we are in favor of whatever the law allows in terms of required parking. We have really problems with too much on-street parking as it is and very narrow streets in most cases. And so we would like to minimize parking impacts. We think that the state laws are a good compromise in the interests of the current homeowners and residents and the need for additional housing. We would also like to see some kind of a requirement that if any variances are allowed, that they be accompanied with an affordable housing requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you for providing your public comments. Next on our list, we have a phone number with the last three digits, 858. I am giving you permission to speak now. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi there, this is Catherine Avila. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Great. Great. Thanks commissioners for taking the time to, it sounds like, read the public comment which I submitted ahead of the meeting. I'd like to highlight just a few points on here. It sounds like height is a very hot topic for the entire community and I think this particular item deserves some more attention and perhaps some more work by staff to really hash things out and, and come to a good conclusion. But in short, I'd like to point out that currently the ordinance as it's written requires the roof slope of the AD, of a new ADU to match that of the existing house. It also requires maximum heights be respected, either 16 feet or 20 feet. And those two standards are in competition with each other. They would be infeasible in many cases. For example, you had a nice Victorian house with a steep pitched roof. It would be very difficult or impossible to achieve that roof pitch while also respecting the height standard. So I ask that you all or staff work out that inconsistency, take a direction or pick a compromise. I'd also like to talk a little bit about size limitations of the overall ADUs. I'd like to suggest that in lots that are larger, that can handle a larger structure, that larger ADUs be allowed. So there are some very generous lots in Monterey, particularly maybe up by the golf course and, and the more rural parts of the city. And those lots might allow by the normal zoning standard, a much larger structure. So I ask that if an ADU could be put on the lot while respecting all floor area ratios, lot coverages, those types of existing standards, allow it to be larger. Don't cap us at 800 or 1,000 feet. I believe there's a place for larger ADUs within the city of Monterey, when appropriate, on less dense lots. Also would like to talk a little bit about the architectural standards for windows in particular. This one jumped out at me. The standard's asking that ADU windows match that of the existing home. And in the case of wood windows or perhaps replacement windows, that can get a little complicated, might incentivize some strange behavior. And I wrote more about that in the letter, but I won't take more of your time talking through that now. I trust you all can read it. So in short, would like to ask that you all maybe have staff do some more refinement before this is passed on to the city council. I think if done correctly and thoughtfully, ADUs can be an asset to the community. But if we don't think about it hard enough, we'll end up with a bunch of flat tops boxes that are pretty unappealing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you for. Sorry about that. Thank you for providing your public comment. Finally, we have one more commenter with a hand raised. And that is Jean Rash. I've just allowed you to unmute.
Thank you. There are three major concerns that I have. And I would urge the commission to be very conservative because there is no review. There, there is no design review allowed on these ADUs and junior ADUs. So the decisions that we make now, we, we will be stuck with, so to speak. So I, I would urge caution and I think the recommendation of staff is cautious. I support the 850 and 1,000 square foot maxes. I support the 16-foot height limit, especially in S1 areas. I concur with Commissioner Brasfield that the parking is of concern in our town, which is so impacted in a lot of neighborhoods. The, the other area where I think we need to be cautious is, is this, we cannot change until 2025 that the units of the ADUs at least do not have to be owner occupied. What, what this tells me is that it will be speculative. The, these aren't mother-in-law units. These are speculations and I think we ought to be cautious and see what the impacts initially are before we allow an ordinance that we cannot legally review. So I, I appreciate the staff's caution and applaud your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you for providing your public comments. I do not see any more hands raised. So just a reminder, if you are in Zoom, please raise your hand by pressing the button in Zoom at the bottom of the screen. Or if you are calling in by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. I continue to not see any hands raised, so I would say that it is safe to move on.
Okay. Let's open this up to commissioner comments and before we open it up to comment, are we offering amendments to the draft ordinance tonight? Or are we just making comments that will enable us to redraft the ordinance? Is this a permanent thing?
I think it's up to us.
Kim's working with her microphone right now.
There we go. Sorry about that. It depends on how complicated the changes are. So if it's fairly straightforward direction, you know, 25-foot height limit, that's what we want. I mean, we can, you can make your formal recommendation to the city council and we can easily amend the ordinance to include that. If your proposed changes are more expensive than that, then you know, I'll probably look at Erin and we're, we're going to try to figure it out and we may recommend a continuance to the next meeting. So that's, I think it just really depends on the deliberation that you have and where the conversation goes.
All right, Dan, you want to start off?
Well, I just want to start off by saying how I look at this. I have a filter that I'm taking all this information through. Although increasing our housing stock is a lofty goal and probably quite necessary, I, I actually mourn the loss of single-family zoning. And that's essentially what's. And that's essentially what's happening here. We no longer have single-family zoning. So my filter is going to be looking at this ordinance from the standpoint of how are we going to minimize the impact on the single-family neighborhood? As an example, I think parking is probably one of the more significant issues for me. I mean, I don't know of a neighborhood in Monterey except maybe Fisherman's Flats or Deer Flats, where parking isn't an issue on the streets. And I agree that we should be more conservative in our assessment of this because one leaves us, that's it. It's a checklist, and who knows what people will come up with based on something that we had, you know, really good intentions for. And so that's just where I want to start.
Okay.
So I have similar concerns, but I also have a few more questions. Sorry, sort of cropped up. So this 2025 owner occupied thing, the up until 2025, you can rent it to anybody. After 2025, it has to be owner occupied? Do I have that right?
After 2025, assuming the state law isn't amended again, the city could impose owner occupancy requirements.
I see.
So Erin, I have a just clarifying question on that. Will that only be on new units after 2025? And the ones that are constructed between now and 2025 could continue to be general rentals? Is it retroactive to other units that have already been approved?
I have to think about how it would be retroactively applied just because you couldn't impose the covenant. So let me look into how we could apply that retroactively, but moving forward, definitely.
Well, just to take off on your question, does this owner occupancy mean that a rental, the owner of a rental that's already being rented out to somebody else, can build an ADU which can also be rented by the same owner? So you'd have two rentals on the same property.
I mean, the idea with this state law is to increase housing stock. And if it's just a guest house for the R1 owner, and he can't rent it out, or he or she can't rent it out, is that what's going on here?
No, I mean, ADUs can be rented out.
Okay.
And so if you have, the main house could be rented currently, and the ADU could be rented. Where this changes is if there's a JADU on the property. If there's a JADU, then there has to be owner occupancy.
Oh.
And one of my clarifications, and I guess I just have a question for Erin. Does the JADU have to be owner occupied or the main house? Or does it not matter?
It doesn't matter. Either can be owner occupied.
So we will be able to have a, some sort of, oh, I'm probably going to use the wrong term, but I'll say a covenant or something for a JADU. When we issue a JADU permit in the future, we'll be able to potentially have a document recorded that one of the units has to be owner occupied.
Okay. And then, what we hadn't really talked, we haven't talked about view issues. And they're so, they're so primary on the hilly parts of the city, which is almost the whole city. So somebody could build a little unit over their garage and blot out their neighbor's view, and the neighbor can't do anything about it.
So I just have a nuance there. Under existing state law, they could build the four to four, you know, four feet with sixteen-feet height limit, and it could block 100% of somebody's view.
Right, ministerially.
So if we agreed as a commission to raise that, we're increasing the potential impacts of view to neighbors. And, you know, a lot of the stuff we agree to, we're also creating impacts to our historic resources as well.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot that we're giving up to accommodate an increased housing stock.
The effect of the sixteen-foot requirement by the state, if you take all the comments into consideration, is limiting it to a one-story building.
Yes.
So
So if your point of view is to minimize the impact, then that would be a direction to keep that intact.
And if the council or if the commission or the planning department decided to loosen that up and increase height to twenty-five feet for our three neighborhoods that already have a twenty-five-foot limit, it could be applied to just that, our three neighborhood. Am I right, Kim?
Yes, we have complete
Flexibility to define the district we would want to allow over sixteen feet.
Okay.
I think when we originally started this conversation with the planning commission several months ago, we said, should we do it as the R1 and our three districts?
Check your mic, Kim.
Thank you. What I was saying is that when we started this conversation with the planning commission several months ago, we were actually having this conversation for R1 and R3 districts. And I think we heard pretty clearly through public input that R1 was a really big concern. And so we refined the proposal to R3 and twenty feet. And that's just a judgment call. You could have it less or more flexible.
Okay. I'm sure the other Commissioners have comments.
Mike Dawson's going to be raised.
Okay. Mike?
Hello. I've got a few comments. Page twelve, number two. It says, "or rear twice." Probably don't need it twice. That's what?
Yeah, it's a little
What is the repeated word?
"Or rear."
Okay.
It says, "or," you know, in the, "or rear, or rear." Four feet, four quote said that. Page twenty-four, under H, shall be approved ministerially. I hate that. I absolutely hate that. Some of us maybe remember a planner who was not to be named, who did a lot of ministerial approvals. Turned out to be absolute mousetraps. I really, I really, you know, I trust the planners, but I really think that a lot of this stuff needs to have a review. If they could, if they could come to us as a as an up or down, that would be fine. But I think just ministerially, that's just horrible. Number three, parking. The guest speaker was absolutely correct. Old Town, at one point in time, every afternoon, there ain't no parking. And part of that is because some of those apartment owners resist parking on their property. So all of those people who are in those apartments have to park by the street. And I lived on that, on this 400 block of Monroe, and I could see it. There was no parking in the afternoons. It's really not fair. And so for us to limit parking again is a problem. And here we go with the historic thing. I need to, I need to hear how we're going to solve the extra entrance problem with historic buildings. Please.
All right.
Always please.
Hanson, you have some comment, I'm sure.
Yeah, so I have comments. I mean, I put in my notes, but, right. I mean, there's kind of two camps. There's the pro and the con. But really, there's no camps. There's no pro or con or anything else. It is what it is. I mean, it's the state law. It's already in place. As we speak today, there is already rules relating to this. So it's a really, it's a matter of competing issues, right? I mean, how do we protect views? How do we protect parking? How do we do this? What is the minimum damage that we can? And damage is probably not the right word. What is the minimum impact to the city that we can, you know, have, but still allow and comply with the law that's that is being, I mean, it's forced upon us? I personally have issues with the views. You know, let's try and protect the views as much as we can. I'm concerned about going to twenty feet right away without, you know, without seeing what the sixteen feet actually looks like. We really, I mean, Kim, I guess you can add to that, because this has been going on since January 1, 2020. So you probably do have some thought on, I mean, obviously, your thought is to, we should be raising it near three to twenty feet. But I guess maybe a little bit more comment on that from you, Kim. But I do, I also agree with Catherine Avila that, you know, we don't want, and I'm very worried about square boxes that just look hideous. But they comply with the rules, right? I mean, sure, we have this great, we have, you know, a gray stucco box that's twenty by twenty by sixteen feet high, and they're all over the town. I just, that would be the worst thing we could possibly do. And I, you know, to have the accessory dwelling unit fit in to the lot, to fit into the property so that, you know, it blends in, let's say blends in. And I would, you know, defer to architects who can do all that kind of thing better than I. So we probably need to hear from the architects on the committee, which you've already talked about. But regarding ministerial, that's here to stay. I mean, if you have any issues with that, you've got to go talk to your state legislatures and get that changed. That's just what's in the law. Finally, I am very worried about the historic aspect of this. How does this impact historic residents? We are the most historic city. You know, I would argue in the United States, but, you know, at least in California. And how does that impact? I mean, that just, it's, so we're going to agree, we're going to, you know, we need to figure that out. I mean, how do you destroy something that is, you know, 150 years old by putting, stirring up an accessory dwelling unit? One other question I have for Kim, which I didn't ask earlier, is what if somebody's on a Mills Act contract? Does that void the Mills Act contract? Does that, I mean, can they do any of this? You know, those are, I mean, those are all just questions. I think, to a certain degree, there's a lot more unknown than known. And I I kind of like the default that we have with the city, I mean, with the state as the default right now, until we can get it right. Those are my comments.
So interesting. Mike Brassfield?
Only a couple. One of the things that, if we can put into a preamble for this ordinance, that the city encourages maintaining parking because it's a finite resource, that would be advantageous because it shows intent when the people come in. Second thing is on the height. I agree completely with Hanson. I don't want to see a box. And for that reason, I'm going to suggest that we start with the twenty-foot height. I listened to the public comments and other members, but this is, this is a disaster design process if we don't encourage some basic rules. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I think all of the comments are really worthy of note. And also of possibly redrafting those amendments to the state law as it now stands. I thought that the reality of the comments by Mr. Iyello versus Susan Nine is really where, that's a real issue. Where if you're an apartment owner in old Monterey, and your height limit is already twenty-five feet, you want to keep that twenty-five-foot limit because all the other buildings are just that high. If you live in Monterey Vista neighborhood, and you realize that anything over sixteen feet is going to impact somebody in a negative way, then the state law is your friend because it limits it basically to a one-story addition. In terms of being fair and taking into consideration the parking, major parking issue, to, I would recommend amending our ordinance to say that a parking structure does not have to be required for an ADU, a replacement parking structure does not have to be required for an ADU, and does not have to be required for a JADU to keep it equal. Because to make the whole addition clumsy to require yet another garage to be built just because it's a JADU, it's just adding more buildings and buildings for parking. So if we could amend the ordinance to say that, you know, both do not have to have replacement parking, then by default, it's the driveway, isn't it? Yeah. I thought the public comment was really good. So here we're back with the issues. And do we need to list the issues that we've brought up or suggest a forward motion here?
So I heard the issues, but I'm not sure exact. I mean, I heard contrary opinions on those, a lot of the issues. So if I can just sort of, I took notes. And then there may be some things we need to work on where I heard conflict. Regarding ministerial or discretionary, we're prohibited under state law to have discretionary review on ADUs and JADUs. So we can't do that. We have to process them in six days.
But there's a back door there in that Laurie Lynn said that certain buildings have certain building requirements as opposed to the setback. And so, for example, if the building was a foot from the property line, it would have to have a firewall and no windows. So that in itself is a kind of review.
So certainly, there's building review. We'll be looking at electrical systems, plumbing systems, and compliance with California Building Code. It's required. But in terms of architectural or planning commission review, it cannot happen. I heard that you want us to think about an objective standard for entrances to historic buildings. I heard a couple things in parking. Chair Freeman, I heard you say, you know, the issue on the table is JADU and replacement parking. I heard, you know, that by default, the driveway will serve as that replacement parking. I heard other Commissioners saying, you know, we need parking. So I don't know whether everyone agrees, you know, by default, it would just be on the driveway. So we would remove the replacement parking requirement for JADUs and just assume that it's on the driveway is where I heard it.
Moving, you just removing the cupboard parking.
Right. Correct. So compliant parking is typically behind the front yard setback for, you know, a fifteen-foot with one covered space. And then our more flexible, more recent rules allow for single-family tandem parking behind it. So it would, you know, I guess the question to the commission is parking in the driveway okay for the replacement parking?
As long as it's not on the street, I would say it would be okay.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
So there needs to be
Wait, Hanson said something. What?
That would be fine with me as well. I agree.
Okay. So historic buildings, entrance, driveways, a space for JADUs. And then, you know, there was a question about the Mills Act. If a property is subject to a Mills Act, which requires compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards, does that trump ADU law? I don't know. We can look into it.
That's a great question.
Our legal staff, I don't know what the answer is. We might be able to, either the city or the, I know the property owner can issue a notice of nonrenewal, but it expires ten days or ten years from that date of notice of nonrenewal. So there's that. So there's that option. If the city felt that the ADU was, I think, that objectionable, perhaps. I don't know. We can look into that more. Um, and so we talked about parking. And then, you know, I think I need direction on, on height for, you know, is the R3 district the district we're going to look at? Well, are we going to look at no districts for height increase? Are we going to look at the R3 district for a height increase? And if so, what is that height increase? So I, I just need policy direction from the commission.
I think it makes sense to match the R3 height with, uh, with the accessory dwelling unit height.
So 25 feet?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. It is a R3 zone.
Hey, hey, Dan, could you speak up a little?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just kicking back in this cushy chair that I haven't sat in in over a year.
You wanted to.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I was saying, I thought it was appropriate to match the height for the R3 district. You know, I, I, I'm flexible. I, I was rigid beginning of this meeting about keeping the height at 16 feet in the R1 district. And because that's a known quantity, whatever horrible thing that is created isn't going to be any taller than 16 feet. And, you know, we're minimizing its impact. But there's the other part of it is the aesthetics of what's being built, which we've lost complete control over in this law. Do we want to trust the checklist process and the extra height? That we will get something in return for it, something aesthetically appropriate? I'm not convinced myself. I, I think I, I personally am going to be very conservative about this all the way around.
It's funny, I, I came into the meeting with a more liberal notion, like our colleagues in Berkeley are, you know, um, or as Commissioner Dawson would call them, the commies. They consider R1 a vestige of a, of a horrible, uh, you know, elite, uh, notion of, anyway. And also the, um, the idea of the parking that everybody in the future is going to ride bicycles and, and we aren't going to need parking. But I, I'm actually, I've been convinced from these discussions probably to uh, go more for less height. And, um, just keeping to the minimum state law for parking. I think, I think that's just the reality of our, of the way people live in this town right now. Maybe in 30 years, the, um, there will be less cars and, and all that stuff will work out. But for now, we, I think we have to deal with the, um, parts of town that really have, have severe parking, uh, problems on their streets. And we don't want to exacerbate that if we can avoid it.
Okay. I, for one, thought that the public comment brought me to a new level. I really thought that it was well thought out and each one had his or her own reason for their comments, which were well presented. And one we didn't pay too much attention to, not yet anyway, was from Catherine, who said for the larger lots, more size should be allowed. The state law already allows both a JADU and an ADU on a larger lot. You can have both, right?
Yeah, but I think what she was getting at is since it is a larger lot and there's more land for it to breathe, that a larger ADU would be appropriate in a situation like that. But I mean, how do you identify those lots that where that would be appropriate? I think that's problematic.
I, I actually liked the 850 and 1,000 square foot.
I wouldn't be supportive of changing that to anything bigger.
To look into, um, emotion, you know, an idea of emotion. It seems like the only one that we really could talk about is replacement parking height. Because the other issues such as voiding the Mills Act by building one of these or, uh, extra entrances to historic properties, these are things we don't know the answer to.
So we're, you know, if, if I sort of heard four or five things, if you want us to bring back a staff report with a brief discussion on all of those. Um, and I heard
I think that would be.
We can do that, and then we can amend the ordinance if we, if we find anything there.
I think that'd be appropriate.
I do, too. I think create a structure for regulated height limits based on the zoning of the residential neighborhood.
Well, it's going to be hard to do for a whole city.
It's your little dog is waving, anyway. Um, and then to create a structure for, uh, parking replacement. And then if you can, answer the questions about, uh, impacts on historic homes for extra entrances in Mills Act. Was there anything else?
So I do need a point of clarification on the height. I heard Commissioner Fletcher say 25 feet in the R3 district was acceptable. Um, are you also suggesting the R1 district? Because I, I, so the R3 district. Okay. We can bring a couple options back to you.
A motion to continue this or?
It sounds like the chair has made a motion.
Has the chair, no, she hasn't. She's waiting for somebody to make a motion.
And she speaks of herself.
I, I'd like to make motion that we continue this to our next meeting, or do you know, need longer than that?
I think we can continue it to September 14th.
Okay.
And if for some reason, because I think these are pretty minor modifications.
Okay.
And if we can't, then we'll come to that meeting and continue it to the next meeting.
Okay. That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
There we go.
Excellent. Uh, there's been a motion to continue to, uh, the next meeting to refine the, uh, suggested ordinance. And a second, all those in favor? Jennifer, you want to read the roll call?
Um, first, we have Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
And Commissioner Milich is absent, but that motion does carry. And the item is continued to, we said, September 14th.
All right. The last item on our agenda, on our regular agenda, is Consider 2101 North Fremont Street, Adoption of a Mitigated Negative Declaration and Approval of a Use Permit to Redevelop an Existing 18 Room Hotel Restaurant and Parking Lot Site with a New 42 Room Hotel and Parking Lot. Is, is there a staff report?
I, I only have one brief comment. In the staff report, we recommended continues, continuance to September 14th, 2021. And we received a letter from the applicant that they're requesting October 12th, 2021.
Is there a reason why it's going to a whole month?
And they were not available on September 14th.
Oh.
So they just requested it, um, so they could attend the public hearing on their project.
Okay. Well, then is there a motion to?
We do have to accept public comment, and I believe there's people on the phone that would like to make comments.
Yes, and before I take, um, come, public comments, I just want to announce one more time how people can join in case they would like to provide public comments. Um, we do recommend joining by Zoom as it is a secure service that protects. I'm sorry, that connects you live with no lag time. The meeting, uh, the meeting agenda posted to icertchmonterey.org does have instructions to join via Zoom or by telephone. You can dial 833-568-8864, toll-free. Once again, 833-568-8864 is the number to call. You will need a number, a webinar ID for this meeting. It is 161-990-8039. One more time, 161-990-8039. To provide public comment, once you are in Zoom, please raise your hand using the button in Zoom at the bottom of your screen. If you're providing public comment by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. And just one last reminder, we do have a three-minute time limit. Um, and I do, oh, yeah. And, okay. Sorry, I'm just getting ready to share my screen on Zoom. And that changes everything. Sorry, I can't see the attendees when I do that. So Derek Oliver, your hand is up, and I will ask you to unmute.
Derek Oliver, you should be live with the.
There we are. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll keep my comments brief. This is Derek Oliver again from Fenton and Keller, legal counsel for the Maroon family, the owners of the apartment complex adjacent to the, uh, project site. Um, I assume y'all received my August 10th letter. We are trying to sort of whittle these issues down. Um, and I understand from my brief conversation with Kim Cole this afternoon. Um, thanks for the callback, Kim. I understand now that the project has been continued, but that the, um, applicant recently provided a new noise report to the city, um, but didn't provide it to my office or the Maroons or anyone else that I'm aware of. So I think the applicant's counsel's accusation of gaming the system at the last month's hearings apparently now come full circle. Um, nonetheless, uh, my comments are all focused on public participation. And I'm just going to ask that the noise report be published now. That my August 10th letter that was not included in the staff report be published now. That the two comment letters from the members of the Via Del Monte Neighborhood Association did it August 17th and 18th. And any other public comments that were not included in the staff report, uh, be published now. Um, same with the, um, requested lesson on the history and applicability of the North Fremont Pacific Plan and the zoning ordinance. Um, that those, those pieces of information and that lesson should be provided now to give uh, the planning commissioners, the surrounding neighborhoods, and the general public more, not less, time to review that information. And I think the same goes as for parking and all the other issues. There, there are lots of issues, and to the extent that the public can have time to review each of these important issues, um, the, the better, rather than getting 12 different issues and 18 different reports, um, four days before a hearing. Um, obviously, parking is an important issue, as we just heard from many of the commissioners on the previous item. And I think that issue needs to be addressed, especially as to the comments that I made in my previous letter about the code requiring 43 off-street parking spaces, not just 42. So with that, oh, and my last comment is, as the story polls still, um, story polls still haven't been erected. And again, failure to do that violates the city code and, uh, and unfortunately does not provide the public with the sufficient notice to evaluate the project's size and scale. So again, all in the name of public, um, notice and opportunity to comment and be aware of, of, of what's before the city. I think it's important that all these documents and information be provided to the public for review and comment as soon as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you for providing your public comment, and thank you for staying under the three-minute timer. Did not start the timer at that time, so I appreciate that. Okay, next, we do have Dwayne Peterson. Uh, you should be able to unmute yourself now to provide public comment.
Uh, good evening. Uh, can you hear me? Okay.
We can. Thank you for checking.
Okay, I am the, um, party as previously mentioned, I sent in a letter on the date of the 17th, which, uh, covered, you know, some issues that, uh, I've got. And primarily, as I've said before, it's parking. And, uh, I did find where the city ordinance or the city charter says that off-street parking shall be provided as stipulated in the zoning ordinance. So I went back to that and then found out that one space per room, understand that, but also a loading space. It may be provided, but I didn't see it on the diagrams. So my proposal is for a project condition, which basically is all activity slash operations that generate parking space use on site must remain there. That includes visitors, staff, employees, et cetera. And at such time that all spaces are occupied, operations should be curtailed until spaces become available. There's mitigation measures, I mean, such as carpooling, public trans, et cetera. And, uh, city code also provides for shared parking agreements. Bottom line is, I'd like to really make sure that, to the maximum extent possible, that the commission, uh, when they approve this project, that there is no, you know, more misery, you know, meted out to the local residents. And that's my comment for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for providing your public comment. Um, next, we do have somebody named Diane raising her hand. And you should have permission to unmute. Sorry, Diane, now you should have permission to speak, and I believe you are unmuted, so go ahead. You should be live with the planning commission.
Okay, this is actually Leila Maruma. I'm with Diane, so, uh, I'll, I'll be speaking.
Thank you for letting me know.
So, uh, my comment for this meeting is, is the building height and size. So I believe the height restriction from the Fremont North Pacific Plan is not being implemented. And it, it is a, a requirement. And the proposed hotel is not in harmony with the surrounding area. Most of the surrounding buildings are one-story with some two-story buildings. There is only one structure that is a similar height to Deansa Inn, but this was built before the Fremont North Pacific Plan was issued. And this building is on a much larger property and setback from the street. It is also not on the corner, uh, of a main residential street directly adjacent to it, like Casa Verde Way. Casa Verde slopes upwards towards Fremont Street, which makes a planned avid hotel building much more prominent and enormous. The illustrations by the applicant do not accurately represent the enormity of it as it points of use are taken to minimize it. The true enormity can be seen by having stakepools put up for all to view. These are often even constructed for single-family residences. The applicant's own drawing, Title Code Analysis Drawing, previously stated that building height allowed 35, proposed 35. What's being proposed isn't 35, it's 45. The, the same drawings still show that information, but the, it's now changed to project data drawing. That's now the title. So it's very important to take another look at this. Take it the, take a look at the height requirements and, and get those required stakepools up there. So everyone, all the public could see the enormity of, of this project and how out of character it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
It was actually Leila Marum, her sister, that.
Oh, so sorry.
Thank you, Leila, for writing public comment. Um, and I believe that is our last public comment here. Oops, sorry. And I do not see any further hands raised. So once again, if you are already in Zoom, there is a raise your hand function on Zoom, or you can dial star nine to raise your hand if you are dialing in by phone, which I think actually everyone who has, is in the meeting has spoken. I do just, we don't have an audience anymore, so I think we're good on public comments.
All right. Thank you, everyone who made a comment, public comment. Uh, let's open commission comments now. Are there any comments from the commissioners?
I have a question to Kim. There seems to be a kind of a moratorium on story pools in the city. Is there a particular reason?
More time on what?
Story pool.
Story pools.
Story pools. Story polls.
Um, no, there's not a moratorium on story polls. Um, we do have a letter from the building official that story polls on the site are unsafe. And the requirement for story polls by our code is at the architectural review committee stage and not at the planning commission stage of a project. So um, saying that, we did look at the issue when, um, in the latest letter by Mr. Oliver, and it's been determined to be unsafe. You can't um, install three-story poles directly adjacent to a high-travelled street. And that's the discretion allowed in our municipal code under architectural review. So we did look at that.
Kim, can I ask a question? When we reviewed the building that Paul Davis did down on Delavina, Fremont, there was a scheduled not ridge poles, but they floated balloons. Was that because it was difficult or nearly impossible to safely put up ridge poles?
Correct. So our building official on several projects has determined it's unsafe. The first was Two Thirty Lighthouse. Where we have a completed three-story building on Lighthouse. Um, the project, um, I think we put up one pole on um, the
Cities.
The project next to the North Fremont area. Um, but it's really hard to put up a thirty-five-foot pole without full engineering and um, adjacent to a public street like that. So that call has been made by our building official. It's the same call that John Keel made on two projects and Ms. Williamson has made the same call.
Is uh, is there any issues with the amount of time that balloon is up or making sure people feel that they've had access to that? To view that? I, I mean, when
So typical requirements under architectural review is that the story polls go up ten days in advance of um, the public meetings. That's the same time the notice goes out. If, if, if safe story polls cannot be provided, alternative means are provided. And so in this case, um, even though it's not required in the public notice that went out, we did talk about um, the um, project plans have been posted at the site. So that's more than is typically required.
Last question. On the building down on Delavina and Fremont, um, was that done for planning commission or was that done for architectural?
That was done for the community. Um, they wanted one pole up and we went back to see if we could to, put one pole up with the total building height. And I think it was screwed into, I forget what, but um, there was one pole up for, I think, one day. And then it came down.
Okay.
Good information. Um, anybody else want to make a comment on this? Right?
I was just thinking, you know, would it be too tedious to agendize it at some point?
To agendize amending the municipal code?
No, to agenda is just discussing this story poll issue, because it seems to me like the, the building official is going to err for caution. And she doesn't want to say, oh, go ahead and put those poles up. She doesn't know. Unless it's engineered, there's no way she can say it's safe. So she's in a bind. And I, I, um, I think the public is being, you know, deserved in a way here.
I think they've handled it. Building official has made calls on
Yeah.
whether it's a story poll or a balloon or, or whatever. Um, I'm, I'm confident in their expertise on whether something's safe or not.
No, I trust them too, but I understand they, they tend to
I don't know that if there's much more we can discuss. I mean, what, much more we can
Yeah, you're probably right.
Yeah, so the, the planning commission does not have the role to overrule the building official. Um, the only um, board where um, compliance can be the appeals hearing board. Um, and that's typically with, you know, as building code calls. Um, we maybe have one of those a year, but that's the board um, that can overturn, if you will, the building officials.
Well, I guess the best we could do is ask staff to just work with applicants to try to put up balloons or something like that whenever possible.
So you're saying, um, if we can put up balloons, you might like to see that or something, something that's not structural.
Story polls, I think that would be nice, because I think there are a lot of neighbors who never have a clue that something is going in. And the, the story polls serve that sort of public noticing function.
And not only that, but if we can get some image of what the heights are and take photographs of them and put them on the website, it's, we have and that's what I think, I, I hear it. I mean, I, I've talked to some people and they say, well, why don't they show us the height? And I said, because the city engineers said no. But anything that can go up can be engineered. Uh, so forty-five feet is not that tall. But I agree. Balloons would do the job. It's just, we need the visual for the public as well as for this commission.
Well, I will definitely investigate if it's possible to put up a balloon. Um, I don't know how that works. Um, it's not required by our municipal code, um, but I can talk to the project architect and the building official to see if it's, if there's a way to do that.
It has to be on a calm day.
A very calm, unwindy day. You know, I want to make a comment that the, uh, the applicant has been asked several times to provide either renderings or CAD drawings or photographs that show the proposed building in context with the buildings around it, and they haven't done that. So that could also be a, a solution for the people who live next door is to see something that shows what the building is going to look like in the context of the street and the buildings around it. So. Anyway, um, do we hear a motion to uh, continue the item? Um, to, is it October the twelfth?
October twelfth.
Okay.
So moved.
Please second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right. Motion is to continue the item two thou, two uh, one oh one North Fremont Street. The adoption of a mitigated net, negative declaration and approval of use permit to redevelop the existing eighteen-room hotel, restaurant and parking lot site with a new forty-two-room hotel and parking lot to October the twelfth, two thousand twenty-one.
Yes, and for the vote, first we have Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
And Commissioner Milich is absent. So this, this item is continued to October twelfth, twenty twenty-one with a vote of six. Thank you.
All right. And with that, I think the last item on our agenda are our open commission comments and our open informal staff reports.
Well, I think there's also notes. If Kim has any comments about our agenda in the future.
Or do you want to take commissioner comments now or planning office update? It's up to you.
Let's do planning office update.
Sure. Um, just a couple of points. Um, the city council recently um, directed staff to move forward with their cannabis direction and we're going to be looking at um, cannabis retail facilities in the downtown except Alvarado Street, the Lighthouse District and the Canary Row Business District, except Canary Row itself. And in the future, that I think I sort of in um, interpreted their discussion as, th- those are the areas they'd like to focus, the planning commission to focus on the first set of amendments. And so we'll be bringing that forth um, to the planning commission with some ideas. In regards to the tentative agenda for September fourteenth, it's changed. So the Avid Hotel is obviously not on. We'll have the ADU ordinance brought back. And the um, fence variance is getting pushed to a further meeting. So we will be working on September fourteenth for the continued ADU ordinance.
Okay.
Is there going to be a meeting on the twenty-eighth?
Um.
Of September twenty-eighth?
Yeah, so it'll, if we get through the ADU ordinance at the next meeting, I need to check on three oh one Casa Verde. We might have it for that project.
Okay, because I'm going to be out of town for both the four, September fourteenth and September twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you. All right, cannabis is going to be on your docket.
Is that a lot of material, Kim?
You know, it's a really good question. I think what we have to do is figure out how we're going to amend our codes. Like what does the language look like, the draft language, and then have the planning commission, you know, pull the hearing like they did today. So we'll be amending the downtown specific plan, the Lighthouse specific plan. At least those two documents.
All right. And commissioner comments, any?
Kirkens.
Hearing none, the ma, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.